All right, good evening, everybody. It is now 6:00 P.M. on August 26th. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Sandwich Board of Appeals. If you could please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. All right. First order of business is a welcome to Brennan Brides for joining the board. Select board appointed Brennan to fill out Mary's unexpired term through the end of June 2029. So, welcome. Welcome, Brennan. With that, some formalities here. The Board of Appeals is comprised of five regular members and one alternate member. The Board of Appeals can have up to four alternate members. Any decision of this board requires a two-thirds vote. Two-thirds of five is four. If there are only four members voting, the vote would have to be unanimous. If five members vote, one member could dissent. This meeting is live and streamed on Sandwich Community Television's website and on local Channel 9. The meeting is being recorded and will be available on the SCTV website as of tomorrow. The board asks if anyone is recording the meeting. If you could please let us know now. As a note, all right. First order of business is review and approval of minutes from both July 22nd, 2025, and August 12th, 2025. Does a motion to approve?
Motion to approve minutes of eight, 12, 2025.
Second. All in favor? All right. So, all business items. Application 2509, that is open and remains open. And we did receive a letter from Attorney Wall that I'll read into the record.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to recuse myself if I wasn't.
Yes, thanks, Brett. Okay. Address to Chairman Nevin. On behalf of the applicant, please accept this as a request to continue the hearing scheduled for this evening to the next available hearing date. Thank you for your consideration. So, I know, as I mentioned, September 9th is the next available.
We will continue application 2509 until September 9th.
Second.
I do have, I do have an issue that may make sense to notify them in advance of the next hearing. The information that they provided in terms of the distance between the pilings in the roof is really of no value in trying to decide whether or not this building was going to stick out. It'll be much higher than the other buildings in the neighborhood. Because basically, all it showed is that the other buildings conform to whatever the height restriction is. So, I think they should provide information indicating what the height of the building is in relationship to the road. So that then you can tell whether or not the other buildings are on the same plane as the building that's proposed. I mean, that's, that's just my feeling. I don't know how everybody else feels about it.
You can ask me for that.
Yeah, we can provide that between now and now.
Yep.
Between the next meeting, I think.
So, we should just notify them. They would like to have information demonstrating what the height of the buildings are in the neighborhood in relationship to the road and what the height of this building is going to be in relationship to the road. That way, we can tell whether or not it's really consistent.
While we have this open, though, there was comment about the boardwalk.
I think the boardwalk still requires variance.
I do, too.
I, I mean, it's at a fixed location on the ground. It's not a fence.
There's no exception for it anywhere.
Right.
So, you want to pass along that they're going to add to it, right?
You agreeable to the 9th count? Does that, September 9th?
Yep. So, a motion to the second?
Yep, all in favor for continuance of the 9th?
Aye.
All right. Next order of business is our new business. Application 2512 for Five Factor Street special permit from Nancy A. and Jonathan D. Fitch, trustees of the Ellsworth Realty Trust, for the purpose of changing, altering, pre-existing non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot. Sandwich Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on the application of Nancy A. and Jonathan D. Fitch, trustees of the Ellsworth Realty Trust, applicants and property owners for a special permit under Section 2420 of the Sandwich Protective Zone bylaw for property located here at Five Factory Street, Sandwich, Mass. Assessors Map 83, Parcel 48, for the purpose of changing, altering, pre-existing non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot. Public hearing is scheduled on August 26th at the Sandton School Community Center at 6:00 P.M. Public record information will be viewed at the public office. We'll ask for a motion to open the public hearing.
So, who?
All in favor?
Aye.
With me, a couple of comment letters to read in from Sam Johnson, engineer. Apologies for the delayed response on this. The engineering department has no comment on the subject application. From Jenna Silva, Assistant Director of the Department of Natural Resources. The Conservation Commission has reviewed the request for special permit 2512, Five Factory Street, Sandwich, Mass., and has no objections to the request for the extension and alteration of a pre-existing non-conforming residential structure on a non-conforming lot. However, the back of the lot touches the flood zone, i.e. removal of vegetation, additional gravel, et cetera, would require conservation approval. Please let me know if you have any further questions or require additional information. Letter from Andrew Mandel, Sandwich Fire Department, Fire Prevention Office. Sandwich Fire Prevention has no comment for the special permit. I believe those are comment letters. Ian, anything else to add from the application?
No, I would give the staff report just as a brief summary. It's Five Factory Street, so it's an undersized lot dating back from the mid-1940s. 10,000 square feet or 0.23 acres. And the applicant's proposing addition, attached addition, that consists of a driveway, some living space, and additional entrances and paving asphalt driveway.
Mr. Fitch, if you'd like to come join me. Tell us about your project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm John Fitch, and tonight I'm happy to be accompanied by my wife, Nancy. And we're both in this. We want to downsize, but not quite to the size that is the current building at Five Factor Street. This permit application is required by Section 2420 and is based on a proposal to construct in addition to a lawfully existing non-conforming structure. This is the same as this board deals with frequently in the Town Neck neighborhood. The location this time is the Jarvisville neighborhood, right up the street here, where lot sizes are just a bit larger than, than Town Neck. The subject site here is 100 feet by 100 feet exactly, 10,000 square feet. This house, this particular house, the existing structure, has zero historic value, as it was built somewhere around 1947. The site is historic, as it was the location of the sandwich glass factory. And there's a plaque two doors down to the north of the house. The existing and the proposed structure is totally conforming as to both side setbacks and the rear setback. The only existing non-conformity at the house currently is the front yard setback, where the structure is roughly 25 feet to the line of the house and 22 and a half feet at the front steps. Could, Steve, could you put up the proposed site plan? Because that's, that's what shows everything the best. The proposed addition wants to hold the front line of the house, as you can see, moving to the south. And it's about 25 feet. And on the north side, it stepped back a little bit, and that dimension is six feet. The current structure is 30 feet already, so it'll be roughly a doubling of the house line, but, but no closer. And the main, or I should say, the minimum setback currently is 30 feet. So, that is where the, the extension of the non-conformity comes in, the request for that. The building commissioner's work, which is filed with this, to provide a table of existing, proposed, and required setbacks, is very welcome and very helpful. It confirms my representation to you that both side yards and the rear yard and the height of the building are within the current regulations and are not non-conforming, that were not before, and the proposal does not make them non-conforming. Ian notes that the front yard setback on the site plan is illegible. And this was apparently a result of degradation from copying, and I apologize for that. I checked with the surveyor to confirm that the correct existing setback is 25 to the front of the house and 22 and a half to the front steps. I think in Ian's table, he had it down as 30. And it sure looked like it on the stamp, but it was 20, 25 and 22.5. We're asking, as I mentioned, to hold the 25-foot setback to keep the addition in line with the front line of the house. I have observed houses on either side of us and the three across the street, all on Factory Street, and represent to you that they are all closer to Factory Street than the 30 feet. They seem to all be in line to, to just my observation. I also represent that the closeness of the, to the street of this house and the other houses, most other houses in Jarvisville, contribute a lot to the historic charm of the neighborhood. Our addition, like all those before us, in the past 45 years anyway, has been reviewed and approved by the historic district. Also, there were several abutters who appeared at the historic district who saw and approved plans. The addition that we propose will not be more detrimental to this neighborhood. On the contrary, it will be completely compatible and complementary to the really nice existing conditions on all sides of this property. Also, there's no additional property being added to this, and there's no new parking at all. Thank you. We ask that you make a finding that it's not going to be more detrimental to the neighborhood, which is all that is required under the bylaw. Thank you.
Questions from the board?
Question, mention the proposed garage. What's that dimension from the sideline?
It's, it's 11 feet.
11 feet.
11.7, I believe it is. And the requirement is 10. Yeah, it's a single-car garage. Would be nice to have both cars in, and I'm not sure which of us is going to win the battle. But there just wasn't room for two.
You can have a half a car. A golf cart, maybe.
Yes, just wasn't.
So, that table you referenced, the only inaccurate measurement is the front yard setback? All the other ones are correct?
In, in Ian's report?
The table that you submitted.
No, that was Ian did that.
What's that?
The building commissioner submitted that table.
Okay.
And, yes, he wrote where he has the front yard setback at 30 something.
Yeah.
It's really, it should be a two instead of a three.
Okay, but all the other proposed?
Everything else is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other board discussion, questions?
Nothing.
Anyone from the public care to comment? No? All right. Ask for a motion to close for, close public hearing.
So, who?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thanks. Thank you very much for deliberating on it tonight, I believe, and should be able to. All right. Deliberations will pass on North Shore Boulevard. Do we want to?
Under deliberations, we have one to say?
Yep. Do we want to do Factory Street first? And then I think, I think Brennan may excuse from 6A as well, obviously. So, maybe do Factory first, and then we can escape.
First night, he's out.
First night. Not trying to, yeah.
If that works for you.
Sure. So, this is the Five Factory Street. The procedural history, the application for a special permit in accordance with Section 1330, requesting relief from Section 2420 of the zoning bylaw for construction of an attached addition at Five Factory Street, was filed on July 30th, 2025, after the proper notice was given and the public hearing was opened on August 26th. Being closed on August 26th, 2025, the application was accompanied by, among other things, site plan entitled Plot Plan Showing Proposed Conditions for Ellsworth Realty Trust, number Five Factory Street, Sandwich, Mass., dated 7/7/25. The board reviewed the application and all other materials submitted prior to the close of the public hearing. The board received and gave due consideration to the testimony given at the public hearing. The following members attended the public hearing. Terrio, Killian, Van Buskirk, Brides, and Karain. Findings, board finds that the application meets the requirements of Section 9, Mass. General Law, Chapter 48. Subject property is located within the R1 zoning district. Property consists of 10,000 square feet with 100 feet of frontage. The applicant wishes to construct an attached addition to an existing residence at Five Factory Street. The proposed addition increases the non-conforming nature of the structure by approximately 49%, exceeding the 30% threshold in necessitating a special permit. The board finds that the proposed addition in proposed paved driveway increased lot coverage from 12.8% to 24.8%. Construction of the proposed new non-conforming structure is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. Section 1330 requirements, the Board of Appeals does not find that there are conditions peculiar to this case, but not generally true or similar permitted uses on other sites in the same district. The Board of Appeals finds that nuisance, hazard, or congestion will not be created. The board finds that there will not be substantial harm to the neighborhood. The board finds that there is no derogation from the intent of the bylaw such that the district's objectives will be satisfied. The applicant proposes to increase lot coverage from 11.9% to 20.2%.
That was 24.8.
I know, we have two different ones here.
Maybe more than doubling it, things only go on to 50.
I know, but that's, that's the numbers that we got from Ian, I believe. Correct, Ian? Those are your numbers?
Yeah.
So, is it, it's not paved now?
It says wire at least. Back right now, it's, well, he said it's a single track when compared to proposed existing.
He, Mr. Fitch didn't seem to dispute the numbers, so.
He's good, not sure of permable versus imperable, so that was kind of what we went with on the, on the plot plan, I'm sure.
So? The difference?
Yeah, that would be, obviously, wind up. Those are accurate from what I could tell from the top.
Okay.
So, the six is accurate and nine is the one that's wrong?
Okay, because we have two findings here that have different numbers on them. So, number six.
I haven't pulled up yet, so this could be incorrect, but there were comparisons of the structure separately, as the structure and then the structure with the driveway.
Okay, so that, the number nine, you're referring to strictly the structure?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'll just add that. Say, the structure lot coverage. Okay, so those are the numbers that go. So, for the structure, the addition in the proposed driveway, it's increasing from 12.8% to 24.8%. And then the proposed increase to the structure lot coverage from 11.9 to 20.2. Sound good?
Yeah. I think number nine might be an artifact. I don't see how that reflects what's being reviewed here.
Okay, so we're going to strike that?
Yes, please.
Okay, is there any other findings? Finding about, I mean, the front yard setback is not in compliance, correct?
Right.
Can we make a finding about that?
It's not, we can make a finding that it's not, the addition will not increase that non-complacency.
Well, it will.
Is the setback about the same distance?
Same setback is the same in the house, but normally, if the steps are fixed, that really should be where the setback is taken from.
So, the setbacks from the step sits what?
I can't.
22.5.
22.5.
And the setbacks from the garage as proposed as well?
26, 25.
Oh, the garage is actually further back in the steps.
So, just the finding that the existing structure, front yard setback.
And that the new structure is not increasing that. Do you count it from the steps if it's just stone and not attached to the house?
That was the structure itself. Which would be, usually if it's attached, if it's stone, you know, it can be reviewed as a different, but usually the steps as well, so. It was illegible when I was trying to skip the, Mr. Fitch cleared up.
Steps have to be considered.
Okay, I don't think we. I always thought that we did it to the structure.
There's a difference.
We always did the structure and not the steps.
Yeah, I always thought steps.
The only time the steps were included is if you had a covering over them or something like that.
If we had, really, we're like a deck or something.
Right. You know, or an enclosed entryway.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
I've always gone with the steps.
Have you always gone with the steps?
It's part of the hubs. If you don't have the steps, you can't get into the house.
I could, I could see that if the steps were wooden steps and they were attached to the house. But if they're not attached to the house, then they could be freely moved, I guess. It doesn't really matter anyway, right? Because the structure is non-conforming.
So, seeing as whether it's the steps or the structure, they're both non-conforming.
Correct.
We'll just leave it at the setback of the existing structure is non-conforming and no increase in this non-complacency is proposed. So, if there's nothing further, I will move to adopt these findings.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, conditions, at the public hearing, the Board of Appeals considered potential conditions of approval for the special permit. The Board of Appeals voted that the following conditions of approval shall be opposed upon any approval of a special permit, that these conditions are reasonable, and that the applicant and its successor and interest shall be bound by these conditions. Failure to comply with the conditions set forth in this decision shall terminate the grant of the special permit pursuant to the requirements of Sandwich Protective Zoning Bylaw. Section 1330, granting a special permit shall expire upon transfer of ownership prior to initiation of substantial construction on or occupancy of the site unless such transfer is authorized in this permit or if no substantial construction or occupancy takes place within three years of a special permit approval, excluding such time required to pursue or await the determination of an appeal referred to in Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 17. Special permit shall not take effect until it's recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds and a copy of the recorded special permit is provided to the Board of Appeals. Erosion controls must be in place prior to construction and may maintain throughout. Structure height shall not exceed 35 feet. Anything further? I didn't have any.
No.
Okay, I will move these conditions.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and the decision, after reviewing the application, the plan and other materials submitted, and after giving due consideration to testimony given at the public hearing, the board hereby approves the special permit application, property located at Five Factory Street, as shown on Assessor Map 83, Parcel 48, for the purpose of constructing an attached addition as shown on the plan of record. I will move to approve the special permit application.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Karain to that, too.
I know, I go through and do all that stuff after, unless you want to sit around and watch me.
Steps are accepted. It's accepted from that 12-foot.
It's for exception, I don't know. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Except steps.
But that's a building, right?
Or any other building.
Yeah. I think that's the time for the science. Okay, our next hearing is, deliberation is 2511. The Inca Realty LLC, 161 Route 6A. Procedural history, special permit was granted for the purpose of operating a retail cafe with coffee roasting production facility in accordance with Section 1330 and 2200 of the zoning bylaw for property located at 161 Route 6A on February 26th, 2020. On July 21st, 2025, a special permit was filed for the purpose of allowing overflow parking to a nearby public-owned parcel of land. After proper notice was given and the public hearing was opened on August 12th, 2025, and closed on August 12th, 2025, the following members attended the public hearing. Nevin, Terrio, Killian, Van Buskirk, and Karain. Findings, the application meets the requirements of Section 9, Mass. General Law, Chapter 48. The applicant is requesting authorization to allow employees to park on nearby public parking on nearby public parking on Main Street. The request does not fall under the purview of the board, as they do not regulate public parking. All findings and conditions set forth, special permit, set forth in special permit 20-02 remain in effect. Any further discussion?
I drove by that today, and at various times of the day, there's a lot of available parking on the site. And yet, the employees' cars still are maintained on that public parking area. And I agree, but I don't think we can regulate public parking or whatever. But I'm wondering whether or not a condition to the original permit via this process could be added, which would require employee parking on site when, when parking is available on site, so that they don't leave their cars there all day. It'd be tough to police it.
That's exactly.
Tough to police it, and that'd be Ian's bailiwick. But, but, you know, why should they leave their cars there all day if there's adequate parking?
I, I agree, but I came up with the same thing. What do you do about it? What, how you, you know?
Regulating.
How do you know whose car is whose?
Exactly.
Because I was doing the same thing. I've been watching it all week, Kevin, like, I don't know if I see the same cars there or not. I, to be honest with you, I don't know. I, you would think, you're right, intuition would be if they have space, use it on the lot, that's all it's for. But can you?
You would think, you're right, intuition would be if they have space, use it on the lot, that's what it's for, but can you make them?
I think you could impose a condition that required that, you know.
But not on this.
Again, how do you, being able to police it is the other story.
I mean, on face value of what this is, which is a specific request.
Requesting use notice. Yeah, we don't have any.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I mean, they can pack on public property like anybody else.
Yeah, right, wrong, or indifferent?
I suppose the only, I mean, as I said, I mean, it's up to the selectmen to decide how parking is dealt with. I mean, I suppose they could impose an hour limit, you know, if they wanted to put up signs.
Yeah, but who's going to, again, who's going to police that? They think the police want to drive by every hour and check cars? They get benefits?
True, true.
I mean, they do it at the beach, right? I don't know. How do they do that? I don't know.
But as, we don't have the authority to grant a modification of special permit to allow parking in public areas because they already have the right tool to park in public areas, so.
I guess that's what that basically says, right?
Yeah, this is essentially saying that we find that the requests, and it doesn't fall under our purview. And even if we wanted to condition the original permit, amend that, we don't have that before us.
But this is a request to amend the original permit.
Okay, but in a specific manner, right? In a specific, they're asking for a specific amendment. You can only approve or deny that. I don't think we can go in and start amending the original permit under this one, right? That would be kind of a reach.
It's an interesting question.
I was hoping you meant.
It opens up, it opens up. I mean, if they're requesting the permit to be amended, I would imagine that that would open up the whole permit, you know, for discussion, you know.
Does it though? If they knew that, they never would have filed one.
If I were on the other side of the table, they know.
Well, we also, it's also almost kind of counter to what we talked, like Jarvis Street, right? Like, if you start saying every business needs its own parking on, on, it's like, that's a slippery, it's a slippery slope from an expectation-setting standpoint.
I'm just wondering whether they failed to provide the board with enough information when they submitted the original application in terms of how many employees that they had on site, because if they had provided that information with the number of employees and you had available to you the number of parking spaces that were on site, then it could have been addressed at that time.
But again, think about it, at the time, they would have said, we have all this public parking right here, so with this plenty, we would have said, yeah, you're right. And we would have gone down the same road, right? Because as we would have done with any business, that.
True. I don't know that that's an actual requirement in the zoning bylaw.
It isn't, no. The zoning bylaw talks about seats.
It's rare footage.
But I don't think you can ignore the fact that there has to be employee parking available when you have a, when you have a.
Yeah, we've asked that along the same lines, and it makes sense. All right, so I guess we won't go away with the point. Any other findings? I will move them.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, decision after reviewing the application, the plan, and other materials submitted, after giving due consideration to testimony given at the public hearing, the board hereby denies without prejudice a special permit amendment for property located at 161 Route 6A as shown on Assessors Map 74, Parcel 034, for the purpose of allowing overflow parking to a nearby publicly owned parcel of land. So I will move to deny the special permit amendment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any other matters for discussion or anticipated?
Not reasonably anticipated by you?
No. I will, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I'll second that. Well, I'll make a motion.
All right.
I'll second it.
All right, thanks.